Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 6, 2013 Board of Education meeting. Just wanted to let people know that we were in executive session discussing personnel issues. And we are being videotaped, and welcome to all our participation in government students. We should hopefully be done by nine. If not, we'll take a break and you can come up and sign out. So if we could start with the Fudge of Allegiance.
I have my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the color for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll start with introductions. It will start with Judy this time? Judy Kehoe.
Charmaine Wijssinger.
Laura Bierman.
Ned Dowey.
I had to change it up a little bit because Lynn was out of her seat. Diane Skeever.
Tom Douglas.
Jody Monroe.
Mike Cooper.
Kate Navarro.
Lynn Limhart.
Okay. Is there, okay, recognition of visitors on an agenda item? No? Approval of the minutes for the January 16, 2013 public session and the minutes from the January 23, 2013 regular board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Fall in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. And student senate report? I don't think I saw Jamie or Megan, but is somebody else here? Maybe we'll go back to that one. Okay, and superintendent's report?
Trying to clean my glasses as soon as I could. It's going so quick. Ladies and gentlemen, members of the Board of Education, a lot of things happening in Bethlehem Central and across the region, especially in the past couple of weeks. First off, I want to thank Mr. and Mrs. Dashew, as well as all the members of the cast of Annie at the middle school and the entire middle school faculty that really assisted in putting on a wonderful show. I had the opportunity of attending, as I know many board members did as well. I was able to go to a matinee and actually make it through the entire show with my three-and-a-half-year-old, and he loved it, so I was glad to have a sort of a day out with my wife and enjoy the hard work of all the students. So certainly commendable job and effort by everyone, so thank you. In addition, we also held recently Middle School Geography Bee. The winner of the eighth grade Geography Bee was Anthony Amato, and in second place, and it wasn't the eighth grade bee, but the entire school bee, in second place was seventh grader Alex Trulson and eighth grader Roger Hugh came in third. Anthony will be able to take the exam to attempt to qualify for the New York State Regional, New York State Geography Bee on April 5, and that will be held in Albany. And the winner of that bee will advance to the National Bee in Washington DC. We wish Anthony, you know, the best of luck in his endeavors in representing our school district, and we're certainly proud of him. We'd also like to congratulate one of our staff, Kristen Vice, in being named News Channel 13's Educator, one of News Channel 13's Educator of the Year based on recommendation and testimony of one of her colleagues. Kristen was selected from more than 190 other submissions. And if you get a chance, please congratulate her, and I know Mr. Clubman's here tonight as well, and we'll commend the board and our Oaklods for that. In regards to some of our athletic events that have been happening, we're in the middle of the season, but today was a very nice day for Bethlehem Central as three of our students took part in signing their national letters of intent. Ms. Katie Nichols in soccer will be attending the University of Rhode Island. Ms. Tara Teo, also from soccer, will attend Manhattan College. And Mr. Victor Fox for golf will attend the University of Maryland. And they were each allowed the opportunity to sign their letters of intent and coverage from not only us but outside media sources. So we wish them well in their future endeavors as they go beyond their post-secondary careers. Our Bethlehem girls bowling team, we just found out, finished third in the suburban council tournament yesterday. And I do believe Tori Burkins, I believe that's someone very special to Ms. Curtis, was selected as the most valuable bowler for the tournament yesterday. And I had the chance to go down and see the bowlers compete, I think it was last week against Avro Park, and it was very nice to see so many people coming out for, one, a wonderful sport in the winter that's inside and very warm, and you have all the benefits of a snack bar. So that's always nice. But the kids really did their part and continue to do so. Also, ladies and gentlemen, I'd be remiss without mentioning what we've been talking about over the past several board meetings in regards to advocacy which relates to tonight's budgetary presentation. On the 31st, the Board of Education along with 20 representative constituents, some that are here in the audience tonight, as well as some that are out in our community, attended our schools in physical peril, running out of time and options over at East Green Bush. This was an event that was the first of its kind by local school superintendents to try to pull together 47 separate and distinct school districts, and all 47 school districts did attend. More than, over probably more than 1,200 to almost 1,500 individuals attended that evening, which made it a logistical problem getting in and out of a high school campus. But to hear about some of the issues with school finances that are not just about this year or last year, but about the last several years, and you will also follow up and hear some tonight. To follow up on that, the individuals that attended on behalf of an invitation from the district are also invited to attend the first-ever advocacy initiative, which will be Monday night, February 11, in Niskiuna High School. This is a way that we can start learning how to effectively lobby and advocate for what Bethlehem Central needs. This will be attended also by those 47 districts. Not everybody will be attending, but if you cannot attend or you would like to attend, please contact Mr. DeVoe at the district office or myself or one of the administrators so that we can get your number and information and get that information to you so that you can participate with us on Monday night. What we are looking for is people with the desire to actively become involved in trying to bring the best financial support back to Bethlehem, which has eluded us over the past four or five years. And rightfully so, we need to also be addressed in the budget as well. And the only way that it's going to happen is by the active constituents of the district. They know who I am, and I'm just one person. They know who the board members are. But when they know who represents Bethlehem Central and the school district from the community level, that's when action takes place, and that's what we're going to start trying to develop. So I hope you will join us in this effort. As the last part, please pay attention to the website. All the information is up there on the bond. We'll put out another story to draw more attention to it as we are starting to look at reconstruction of our website and get the best information out to everyone. We will let you know that the Board of Education has dedicated that full information package similar to our budget will be mailed out to every single address in the district along with a reminder card for the opportunity to have your voices heard on that day. Our emphasis is really about, this is now the community's choice of going forward to preserve our future in light of these financial times. So that's my report for this meeting, and it's been a while since I've given a lengthy report, but there has been a lot of things happening. I know the fellow board members will also add to that, so thank you.
Thank you. And the Board of Education report? I don't know who wants to start. Some of you all went to those bigger meetings. I was waiting for...
Which, which, okay, well, okay, I'll start. First, I was in Washington for Federal Relations Conference, and just as we're having problems at the state level, certainly, we're having problems at the national level also. And there's some serious states coming up, one of the big items that we worked, we spoke to our senators and congressional staff about were sequestration, which the Congress had laid the enactment of that till March, but on March 2, if Congress has enacted, then serious cuts that will affect all of us will start to be incurred at the national level, especially affecting like special ed and whatever. So it could affect our budget into the future. So hopefully something will be done. If you have the opportunity, as always, getting into the advocacy spirit to contact Congressman Tonko's office and let him know how you feel and to urge him to, you know, hopefully they can all work together to find some resolution with the federal budget. The second item was reauthorization of ESEA, the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, formerly known as No Child Left Behind. Again, it's over five years overdue for being reauthorized. Again, they have not been able to agree on how it should go, but meanwhile, I mean, the original act said that we would have 100% proficiency by 2014, which is next year. A lofty goal, but not realistic, and certainly there are a lot more districts that will suffer as a result. There are waivers this year, but that's only temporary, and they need to really get this going for the future. So that was the first big thing. You already mentioned last Thursday at Columbia High School, so certainly advocacy locally, that's so important to do. I think there were, if you saw some of the press, our legislators were present from the area to a large extent at that meeting, listening to the presentation, and I'm hoping that they did hear the message loud and clear. Sometimes it's hard to understand the numbers, but I think the presenter did a good job in explaining it, using some downdraft examples of how inequitable the funding is and how all districts, even suburbs, will be going over the cliff in the near future. Next, well, actually, other than Annie, which, I was thinking about that, the sun will come out tomorrow, and hopefully the sun will come out tomorrow on some of these issues. This morning, middle school, the character breakfast, Charmaine was there with me, again honoring middle school students who have shown some kind of character, doing something when nobody is looking, and actually, Mr. Clubman added another definition, doing something when you, doing something right when you know you can get away with it. And I kept thinking to myself sometimes when I've probably been speeding on the highway when I shouldn't be, but doing the right thing when you can get away with something. So again, students were honored. I know Charmaine, your daughter was honored also. That was great. And I just want to mention the Capitol Conference coming up in March. I know it's a month away, but I think it's important, and the first day of it is a safety conference, and they're actually going to have the FBI investigator, the lead investigator for Sandy Hook Elementary School for the tragedy, along with a lot of other law enforcement officials. And then also some officials, some specialists in the mental health field also looking at the other issues that face schools regarding safety. You know, it's not just the buildings, it's also, you know, programs for students. So that's, you know, it looks to be a very impressive program. It's on a Saturday, March 9. And then, and also looking at things like tools to improve your safety plans in your schools, whatever. And then the rest of the weekend is on advocacy, the legislative conference with lobbying on Monday. I think everybody's received information of it, so I hope, I hope people will attend.
Anyone else?
Just as I had previously mentioned to the rest of the board members, the Capital Area School Boards Association is having a meeting on February 28, and they've invited local legislators to participate in a panel discussion that will be led by Dave Little from the NISBA New York State School Boards Association. So I'm hoping as many of the board members that can participate in that night would be there.
Just a reminder, I'm going to observe some lab school classes this Friday. I'm not sure if anyone else can make it, but I hope to do three or four of them, and I'll report back for the next meeting. The Elsmer Crossing traffic issue was covered in today's Spotlight that I was actually glad it got some coverage because my kids were there. I assume that it has been and is still a very dangerous situation. I'm glad the town is looking into it and talking with the principal in transportation because I think it's just a matter of time before there's a major tragedy out there just with the speeding issue and the people running the lights. Mr. Clubman did say at the character awards, he talked about going over the speed limit as an example of doing something when you know you can get away with it, and it is a 20 mile an hour speed limit in front of the middle school. And I know that when I sit out there waiting for my kids, I can tell that people aren't, so are going way over the speed limit. So if we could just remind our neighbors and our community members that speed limits are for the school zones. So I think that the Spotlight article talked about reducing the speed limit in front of Elsmer even further. That's not the issue. I think people are just driving too fast and running the lights. So you can go down to 20 miles an hour and it's still not going to address the issue. So, but I am glad that's getting some attention.
Anyone else? Before we do the presentation that Dr. Douglas and Judy's going to do, if we could just talk about the transportation policies, not take action on them, but just because Els here now? Is that okay with everyone?
Just for any follow-up questions or questions that you have.
So it would be under the policies being, and there's a few of them, right?
I had a couple of questions. I know I put them up on email, just so people would know I'd be asking. I don't have the exact policy number here, but the last sentence on a policy, I think it's the non-public school transportation one. The last sentence says something about boarding buses and transfer buses. Does anyone have that policy?
Right, but I have to respond to it. Transfers are not considered late bus transfers. And that, it's not considered a late bus. In other words, if students are transferring from a private school to, let's say at the middle school, to another school, and even though it might be a quote "late bus," it's not considered late transportation for those public schools.
The reason it's worded that way is if we say that we're providing late transportation for students for private, they'll might have to send out another bus at a later time and then also take them home. We're just using our late bus runs to continue and expedite their travel home.
So it's a transfer but not a late bus?
Right, I couldn't figure out what they were saying there. The school bus policy, it's a regulation, it had lots of letters on it. There was F. Transportation living along a major highway would be provided. I'm not sure if there was a definition of what a major highway was. Who determines what's a major highway if this is actually?
Major highway would be like 144 through INW, 32, if there were any homes on 32 that we would have to worry about. And obviously, it would be left up to our discretion to determine that.
Okay. So is that the discretion of transportation? Okay. There was one that allowed kids to take buses that weren't theirs as long as they had an approved pass. Do you remember which policy that one was?
8413.
Okay. I thought, I thought that was discontinued.
No, we still do it. But remember last year, we talked about change of transportation program, and we got more kids on these buses. We have at times limited. If the bus reaches the capacity for regular riders, then those with those passes obviously would have to turn them away, or if we have overflow buses there for other reasons, you know, we put those kids on there. But no, we do allow students, if they have a bona fide bus pass, to go to another avenue.
And then my last question or comment was, it seemed like one of the policies talked a lot about how long a distance a student had to walk to a bus stop. It was a 10th mile for elementary. I'm not sure if it said anywhere in the policy how far you had to be away from the school.
Well, it's right. If you look on the website, under transportation, it's right there because it's not, we didn't set the policy. The community voted on those distances. So for the half mile and then...
So that should not be part of a policy?
It's not.
Because it talks a lot about walking the, those distances to a bus stop.
Which is our policy, which is a policy. The other is now prescribed in law because the community voted on it.
Right. One of the things that you have to be very careful of with policy. Policy is good, but policy can also be utilized the opposite way. Because the mandate for busing is two miles and three miles, if you put it in policy, you no longer have the mandate to fall back on because the policy would say that the district's superseding that and going above and beyond. By not having it in, the board always retains the right immediately without changing policy to revert to your mandates if necessary. Once you put it in and say you wanted to revert, you actually cause yourself a problem because you'd actually first have to go through and change all your policies out, which could be tedious in financial times. Here, with it saying the walking distance to the bus stops are 1/10, 1/2, and a mile, that would be automatically assumed that that would be the walking distance to the schools because you wouldn't expect anything different at your bus stop than you do at your schools. You don't necessarily have to put it in writing because also in the budget discussions, as we've said, that was what the board, the board sent out as part of a budget discussion for the community authorized when they said yea or nay on a budget vote last year. In other words, the board enacted that we were going to do those walking out to the bus stops all over the districts, similar to the schools, that if the voters had at that time defeated a budget, then that would be also a defeat, and the board would have to reconsider that with any future avenue that they went out to the board, went out to the community with. So you want to be careful not to put it all in writing, even though it's a matter of record and a matter of our board discussions and authorizations by the vote of last year's budget.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, so we'll go back to the presentation. Is Judy starting or you?
I'm sorry. I'm just trying to get back there. Okay, where do you go? Okay, can't stand there.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and on behalf of the Board of Education and all the administration, as well as the administrators who are here tonight from various buildings, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out on this evening as we start our budgetary planning efforts for the 2013-14 school year here at Bethlehem Central. Tonight, we'll discuss several items and, of course, many numbers. To make this easier for everyone, as well as for our community members who are unable to attend tonight, we'll post this evening's video, as well as the PowerPoint presentation to our website tomorrow so that all can find out the accurate information as it was originally presented. Budget processes for both towns and, as well as the school districts, can be very draining on the community, as well as on the individuals who have to develop those spending plans, i.e. the board and the administration. Over the past several years, this certainly has not been easy, and unfortunately, you as a public, as well as the board, will probably continue the experience of that uncomfortable déjà vu feeling that you're going to relive over the next several budget meetings. Therefore, I'd like to remind everyone that tonight's presentation is just a first blush look at the 2013-14 spending plans. Clarity will certainly arrive as we proceed through the budget development process over the next few months. The reason I need to make this reminder so poignant is due to the fact that the legislature, as well as the governor, have yet to finalize the state budget for which we rely on to help support our educational mission, as well as the reliance upon our own community. Tonight, there will be several facets. We will talk a little bit about enrollment overviews. We will look at the projected operating results for this current year, as well as how we base those results from last year's budget process. Basically, a nice check to see how we are doing at trying to do a long-range plan for the district as well as for the board. In addition, we'll look at our overview of fund balance, which, as you know, we've been utilizing, but we will have to be very cautious as we go forward in planning. Our state aid update, which is still up in the air, but at least we have a picture. The tax cap calculation, which I would urge everyone, please strongly pay attention to this because 2% is not 2%. We will show you exactly what the government and the legislatures and the governors put into place that indicates there's only one place, the number two, shows up in the whole process, and I'm sure Ms. Kehoe will drill that home today. On top of that, we'll have some preliminary revenue totals for this year, as well as expenditure totals. And we'll also have some decisions to be considered as we go forward, as well as some of our future meetings. Tonight, ladies and gentlemen, there's a lot of work that will need to be accomplished over the next few meetings, and to start the whole budgetary process off, we'll look at our enrollment projections. Here we have the current enrollment for our district at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. Currently, our general class size ratios are about 23 students to each elementary teacher. Of course, this never works out like this in the specific classrooms as we have a variety of elementary settings, as well as staffing being divided among five different buildings, as well as the grade levels. At the middle school, the teachers and student ratio is roughly 22 students, and at the high school, it is roughly 18 students per teacher. The difficulty in adjusting these numbers at each level largely depend on the structure, the schedule, and as well as the programmatic offerings that we are capable of providing to our students. Overall, these ratios are not terribly bad when one looks at them on paper. However, I caution you, when one looks at the few troublesome areas, it can paint a different picture. Specifically, our fourth grade next year, in other words, this year's third grade. We heard about this last year. They will have some concerns. However, as we've been seeing from last year, they were on the higher end of our own guidelines. And what happens is these tend to fluctuate throughout the year. These classes in third grade currently this year range from, at the start of the year, from 23 to 24, up to 27 to 28. And if you're an elementary teacher with third grades, as I'm learning about my young son, when I looked at him in a pre-K class today, it can be a challenge. The big thing about it is as we progress throughout the year, that number is roughly about 25 and 26 on average, so it has come down. It doesn't make any light of the situation, but with the financial constraints of the district, we have to always keep that in mind because as these students proceed and reach the middle school, the ratios start to change because you have more students all in one spot, as well as all the teachers in one spot, and they're not divided out by building. And that allows for a different way to break down the classes, as well as course offerings. So it seems to be, at this point, an elementary issue that we need to always sort of keep our eye on. For next year, that group will move to the fourth grade as we reposition students that moved in and that are not at their home schools, and we will have those numbers as we get closer to our deadline in May, and we'll have to review them at that time. But currently, at this time, there's not much growth at the elementary levels. Once you get to grade two through five, there's a lot more stability. The unknowns are kindergarten and first grade. The big thing I would point out in regard... The big thing I would point out in regards to this trend is that currently the enrollment is still declining for our district. We are projecting a loss of around 111 students for the 2013-14 school year. And this trend continues for at least roughly the next three years as we exit graduating classes in the mid-400 range and have around 300 students entering our system at the kindergarten level. The unknown is always what happens in around the middle grade levels where we do see some students migrating back from private locations for their elementary years coming into the system in their secondary years. However, to get the most accurate projections and predictions of this enrollment scene, the district would need to consider conducting a multi-year census report because one has not regularly been done for the district. We've relied on our own sort of in-house developed program, which I have to say has been reasonable in its projections. However, right now during financial uncertainty, housing market uncertainty, it's very difficult to maintain such an accurate projection. Currently this year, we were off by about 28, which is not bad. But that could be, if it's all in one grade level, that could be short one teacher and we're possibly overloading some students. And that would be something we'd want to work with. Usually, it does not occur that way. In all, the district is poised to decline in the number of students over the next few years at a rate of about 100-plus students per year as the large classes move through the high school and the middle school over the next three to six years. The unknown is families moving into the district and how it will affect these projections. However, it's some, if something dynamic happens in the real estate market or the employment market of the region, this could impact projections as well, both negatively or positively. And we certainly would hope for the latter. Current trending however indicates that the district over the next few years will probably lose roughly 1,000 students from its high enrollment days of 5,212 students, which was in 2006, 2007. That was our highest total over the last 22 years. The lowest total was in 1990 and 91 when it was about 4,027. And so what you're seeing is from 1990 to 91, the student population growth went all the way up until 2000, roughly around 2006, '07. It bobbled a little bit, '08, '09. And then it really started to come down over, really right in the middle of the recession to this point here with a continued projection of at least the next three years of continuing that 100 to 125 student slide. In all total, from our high point to about three more years out, we could be down roughly to around 42 to 4300 students. So that's something the board has to look at that when you're budgeting, obviously you have two things that affect your budget, staffing and students. You have more students, you might need more staffing. You have less students, you might need less staffing. The problem here is that going through the recession, you have already exited a large number of staff. But the students didn't come down as much. So our class sizes as though we look at them could also be coming down in the future as well. And we have to keep that in mind as we balance. Overall, the enrollment picture really looks this way considering. The positives are the fact that in the region, you had about five years ago, 130 to 140 housing starts a year in the town of Bethlehem alone, not even counting the town of New Scotland. But that slowly dwindled down to about 30 to 23 years ago. And then two years ago, it hit its low point of only eight housing starts. This year alone, housing starts are up over 300%. Now percentages are numbers, you have to watch them. That eight has jumped to 32 housing starts from January to October of last year. That data was compiled before even November and December finished, so it could potentially go higher. There has been also influx of town homes as well as some apartments being built at this point and scheduled to open within the next year as well as a variety of town developments of multi-unit complexes as well. Particular concern to me is a 50-unit complex right next to Price Chopper on New Scot- I think it's New Scotland Extension or?
Scotland.
South. That is really of concern because our highest enrolled elementary school is Slingerlands. We are going to have to look at how that plays out over the next year as to any options we may have to look at in the future to handle that type of potential student influx. We just don't know if it will be student-centered accommodations or accommodations that may bring less students into the district. We just don't know at this time. So these are some of the things we're looking out for. But really, the projections I think that I came in under as well with the former superintendents are bearing out on the three and six-year and eight-year projection that they are pretty consistent that our elementaries are really going at this point leveling off about 300 to 310 students and then starting to build with families either coming back or moving. So that's the general situation with enrollment. Any questions in regards to enrollment? The general enrollment report will be posted to the web tomorrow morning. That will be on there so that you can look at it as well as the demographics. We do not provide sectional totals and we will not provide sectional totals for the coming year. That is an administrative action that has to be looked at all the way up through summer to try to provide the best balance. And we trust our administrators at the building level to make sure that they work effectively with the staffing that they have, and we commend them for that hard work. And I know everybody will want to know those. It's just something that is, we have to manage for the overall class totals and budget for that and then trust our administrators at our buildings to make it work as efficiently and economically as possible. Now ladies and gentlemen, I'll be coming back a little here and there, but the real meat of tonight's sort of presentation really belongs to our chief financial officer, Mrs. Judith Kehoe, and I'd invite her up to start dazzling you with all the wonderful numbers that you're going to see. So thank you.
I'd like to start the presentation. In fact, I'm going to climb over here to get closer to the microphone. I'm good. I'd like to start looking to the future by looking at where we are in the current year because this will guide what we have available to use as part of our drawdown on fund balance into the coming year. Back in October, we had done a presentation when we were looking at the impacts from the transportation stop modifications and what kinds of savings that we were looking at there. Part of this update and part of the reason why we are essentially going to come close to breaking even on our 12-13 budget is because we had given a range in savings of between $500,000 to $800,000 in transportation costs. And as of this point and looking at what we expect to spend in the rest of the year, we are going to be closer to about $741,000 in savings on the salary. If you add the fringe costs that are a percentage as part of that, you are looking at savings just from the transportation reductions of about $937,000. So that is clearly the largest reason why we are coming closer to a break even in this year's budget. The other significant piece of our savings results from the settlement of the teachers' contract that occurred after the budget was adopted last year. And with the willingness of the teachers where we adopted an entirely new salary scale, the increases in the actual 12-13 figures is only about 0.35% more. So that is considerably below what we had budgeted. That's about another $745,000. So looking at all of the other miscellaneous categories coupled with those two major items is what is, where we were expecting to use about 1.7 million on the fund balance, we'll actually come in closer to break even. So the good news is that does preserve some resources for us going forward. And where we thought we might be ending up closer to $5.8 million on the fund balance, we will be close to the ending point for last year's audit, which was at about $7.5 million. This chart shows you the actual levels of fund balance for our June 30th, 2011 year as well as 2012 and where we project to come out as of the end of June 30th, 2013. As you recall, our fund balance is made up of many different components. A number of the elements are restricted reserves. These are all created as part of local finance law. And they all have specific purposes that the monies are restricted for. The shaded line is the undesignated line, and that really is the piece that is a key indicator for school districts. We are required to make sure that that undesignated piece of fund balance does not exceed 4% of the subsequent year's expenditures. You can see that we had been at about 3.78, dropped down to 3.52 as of the end of last year. So that's well within a reasonable range. Fund balance is something that is looked at very closely by myself and the business office because it helps us relative to cash management and cash flow, helping us to avoid the need to take out debt for temporary shortfalls. It also is something that helps us maintain a good credit rating from ratings agencies, which helps to get us a lower interest rate when we issue bonds. So a very important indicator, we still will be in a decent range. The $1,750,000 that is italicized and bolded under the June 30th, 2013 column is noted that way because that number would represent what the board decides to draw down from fund balance as we go through this year's budget process. So that is not known at this point, but I put that in there so that you could see what the ending fund balance would look like if that were the ultimate choice that was made. When I was at the meeting on January 31st where Dr. Timms was presenting fiscal information to all of the school communities, I almost stood up and gave him a standing ovation when he made a comment about how after his 30-plus years in the business, he has yet to see a state aid run that was accurate or representative of what a district could expect to see. We've talked about this over the last few years. I've tried to give you an understanding of some of the factors that go into it. The aid run is really an estimate of the aid that we can expect based on the formulas that are in place. But it's something that can change. This slide shows you the aid for the current fiscal year, 12-13. And back when the governor's budget came out the prior year, we were expected to get about $22.7 million. The legislature intervened, heard the responses or the requests from many members of the community to please do something to help relieve the strain that school districts were experiencing. And in fact, there was an increase in the aid which put it up to about $22.9 per the aid runs. The number that we actually included in our budget was a little bit lower than this. It was at $22.673, and that was a reflection of our expense reimbursement types of aids. We knew that we were spending less and therefore we expected to collect less. So the good news is that based on the current projections, we are very close to hitting this estimate of $22.673 for the current year.
If I can emphasize a point here especially. If you look at every one of these columns, and I'm going to jump in every now and then, mine is to drill the message home. If you add up every foundation aid, BOSI, special aid, all of our aid packages, all the way down to the gap elimination adjustment, do not add the gap elimination adjustment in there. This is what superintendent's board members are talking about over the past three years. That equals roughly $26 million in aid that the state is giving to Bethlehem. The reason why that last column is there, and this is the crux of the matter, is very simply that they are giving us $26 million in aid. When they say we've increased your aid, that's what they get, they are going by. But they are not going out there and saying, oh yeah, but we're taking it back too to pay our debt. You are paying the state budget debt, every school district is, and it's through that GEA. So it looks like we're only getting 22 million. I don't want to shortchange you. You deserve 26 million. The state is balancing its budget every year, $2.1 billion on the backs of every taxpayer in the New York, in New York, without stepping up to the plate and doing what they've asked school districts to do. You cut so we don't have to. That's what that formula represents. And I hope you'll take that out because that's what we've been talking about for the past three years.
And this was supposed to be coupled with some degree of mandate relief, and we have yet to see any significant improvements in those areas in terms of helping us contain those costs. The governor's aid run that came out on January 22nd indicates $22.296 million for Bethlehem. What was most shocking, kind of took my breath away when I looked at the first run, was if you focus in on the high tax aid line, that has been close to a million dollars a year for the district for many, many years. There was an unexpected formula change that came forth from the governor's office. And that formula change resulted in a 70% reduction in our high tax aid. And not just ours, many other districts are affected by this as well. But to not have any indication that this was coming, it's a $655,000 reduction in our aid. So clearly a significant impact to the district. Tom, you're giving me the signal.
I'm just going to, I, I, these are some things that drive me nuts, so. And I think Judy did a wonderful job of presenting it. I'm going to try to drill it down a little. High tax aid. How many people feel they pay high taxes in Bethlehem? Raise your hand. That aid is given to the districts that supposedly have high taxes too. And guess what they're saying by taking it away? You don't pay high enough taxes. So we're going to take that 50, and it was, $50.1 million. We're going to take it back, not tell you about it because you don't need it anymore. And we're going to use that to offset some other low need, high need, low wealth districts to support their taxes. This is not a class issue, and I want people to understand that. Other parts of the budget are trying to address those issues. But this is one of the most poignant ones for us as well as 139 other districts that lost either 50% or 70% of this resource to help offset some of the taxes in those high taxed areas. Guess which level we were at? 70%. This is one of the things I'm hoping you will advocate for to all your legislatures, to anyone you can talk to to have them contact, our leaders, to say enough's enough. You're trying to make great schools average. We don't want to be average.
One of the other adjustments you'll note that we are putting in these numbers is because we just talked about the transportation savings, we're spending less on transportation in 12-13. Well, the state doesn't know about that reduction in expenditures at this point. Their aid run shows that we should be getting just over $5 million. But I know that based on spending less in transportation, we are going to be eligible for less transportation aid. So that has been lowered down to $4.5 million. Some of the other numbers I have adjusted based on that same review of trending of our costs this year to estimate what it will look like for us next year. It still results in an $875,000 loss in revenues, budget to budget. That's a big number, and that really hurts us as we're crunching these totals. But that is why the aid runs don't reflect what we really expect to get. But that is why the aid runs don't reflect what we really expect to get. This chart just graphically shows you where our state aid levels were, starting in '07, '08 versus where they are. And you can see, as Dr. Douglas noted, in our 1314 projected totals, we're very close to the same levels of funding as we were at in '07, '08. And we have a secondary slide that also has a similar bar graph for the total state budget amounts. That's been superimposed on this chart, just so that you can see it has been a similar increase, or a steady increase rather, in the overall state spending that is not running parallel with our experience.
And also, in regards to this, if we can just have that last slide real quick. If you notice those a couple peaks, I don't want this to be missed. Those major peaks where they, they're not in comparison to one another. This is just overlay so that you can sort of see the message. But in 2009, 2010, and 1011, what is issued of why the aid spiked there was because of federal funds. That's ARA, the American Reinvestment Recovery Act. Those were put there and it made it look like school districts were getting extra aid, but that's when they put in the gap elimination adjustment. So, they gave you that aid, but they pulled that gap elimination adjustment back and they were supposed to fill that gap, they never did. The interesting thing here is look at the line chart, New York State budget. Back in 2007, 2008, it was 121 billion dollars. We have been told that we need to cut costs, we need to hold government spending in, we need to do everything to operate more efficiently. You've seen your own schools lose teachers, lose programs, even enrollment, those would come as well, so we have to be fair. But you have seen a school district now that is operating on a budget that was stuck in 2006, 2007. So, we're actually operating on state aid that is six years old and has never increased. But during that same time, New York State budget went from 121 billion, where they held our aid and all of your aids and forced you to make the difference, to now it's at, this is being nice, 138 billion. 17 billion dollar increase over that same period to run our government, but yet aid decreases year after year for every school district. It does not add up. The reason why I say 138 is sort of a gift, it's actually 142 or 143 billion because of Hurricane Sandy. But you have to understand, that's still budgeted money. We don't hide that money. We just want to point out that the state's budget continues to go up and up and up and we have not really seen major reductions. But in your own backyard, you have been seeing all of the pain and it's time for it to stop.
This was one of the slides as well. If you look at the education funding from the state in '08, '09, this was highlighted as part of that January 31st meeting. Property taxes funded about 49% of school districts across New York State. If you flash forward to 1112, it's jumped up to 56%. And the reason is because that state aid percentage goes down. If you look at our budgets, our revenues are about two-thirds in taxes and one-third in state aid. So, I have some other slides to show you where we have in fact really contracted our level of spending, but yet our taxes are still going up at a higher rate and the reason is, is because we've been offsetting that reduction in the state aid. Here's just a summary of the gap elimination adjustments from '09, '10. It did, after we lost the federal funding in those first two years, we went up to the full amount of just over 4 million dollars. The elimination adjustment has been declining slightly each year. In this year's governor's aid run, it's down just under 100,000 dollars. And if I did my math correctly, it'll take us about 40 years at this rate before the gap elimination adjustment is gone. I'm hoping it doesn't take that long, but it's a very incremental and almost negligible impact to us.
And the hard part about that is that's for our district. There are some districts, the gap elimination adjustment will not disappear for over 50 years. There are some districts that the gap elimination will disappear within six years. And it was supposedly taken away proportionally and equitably away from each district. You would expect that it would be put back the same way. That's where they're playing with the formula and it's causing a slow decline for those schools that are considered wealthy, although our school is now considered, on the state's formula, just a hair under average.
Okay, here's the part you've really all been waiting for, the tax cap calculations. I hope you're still staying with me. I know it's a lot of figures, but. The world of the tax cap, I'm not going to go through this every single line. There's a ton of information about the tax cap formula and how it all works that you can find on our webpage. It is formulaic and it's based on certain growth factors that are given to us by the state. For instance, the first one, the tax-based growth factor, is supposed to be the brick and mortar growth within our community over the past year. So, based on that, they presume you have additional costs because of that growth, so they allow you to increase your levy base because of that. You factor in your pilot payments that are coming in, it's an add-in from the prior year, you subtract out the current year's, theory being if your pilot payments are increasing, you should be able to lower your taxes because of that additional aid. There's a capital exemptions number, again, it's a plus and minus from one year to the next. That's really our net local share of debt service less our building aid that comes to us. In red is the only place that Dr. Douglas referenced that the actual 2% growth factor kicks in. That really is a function of the rate of inflation. The rate of inflation was just over 3% this past year, but the formula only allows us to increase to the lesser of the rate of inflation or 2%. Therefore, we're at 2%. The formula-
That's really where the name came from. The misconception is taxes can only go up by 2%. We're using exactly what the governor, when he proposed it, put into place. We're trying, you know, this board, I know if I speak for them, is trying to do the best for the community. But when the media, and I hold the media accountable for this too, because I think they need to do a better job of really explaining it, because there's the real story. A 2% tax cap is not 2%. It's a calculation. It can go way above 2% and it can go below 2% depending on all of these factors. But the only number that 2 that ever shows up is right in that one line and that's it.
The formula continues to the second page.
It's a long formula.
It's a long formula indeed, one of the joys of my life. The exemptions for ERS and TRS provide that if the rates that come to us from the state retirement systems increase by more than 2%, that amount above 2% can be considered as an add-on to the tax cap calculation. Last year, we had the benefit of that exemption for ERS because their rate increased by more than 2%. This year, it increased by exactly 2%, so there is no add-on to the formula for the employees' retirement system. The teachers' retirement system has gone up over 4% in this coming year. So, that 736,000 dollar exemption amount is really only the increase above the 2%. Our total pension cost increases, which I have another slide on later on, is 1,347,000. So, that is our increase in our costs and the only amount that we're able to get as part of the tax levy calculation is the 736,000. So, the calculated maximum allowable tax levy limit for the district this year is at 3.64%. This is the threshold that if the board adopts the budget with the levy that is at or below this amount, there is only a 50% plus one approval that is required at the May election. So, that will be an important number to keep in mind. The calculation last year was at 2.94 and as you know, we had opted in lieu of harsher reductions, we had opted to go above that level.
And one of the things that is also to give clarity too, that is our district's calculation. You can understand the confusion across the state when you start looking at everybody's calculation because it's entirely different for every single school district. So, last year, there was a school district, I think it was, I'm not sure, was it April Park? There was a school district that their maximum allowable tax levy limit was 12.5%. In other words, they just needed a 50%. Now, they didn't go out there, but they may have had to go at 6%. One percentage from a district does not make any determination to another district because 1% in one district could raise a different amount in another district. So, be careful about the comparisons. Here, ours, this is our calculation for this year, and you see that it went up from one year to the next. If costs go up and aid goes down, that fluctuates according to the calculation and we've got to always be careful to explain that every single year.
This is a slide that just shows the trending of the percentage of our budget change each year as well as our percentage levy increase. And you can see on average, it was about a 5.33% budget increase and a 4.84% levy increase. Now, that might draw you to the conclusion that if we were able to increase our budget with a lesser amount of levies, that would tell you that the state aid was increasing so that we could in fact lower the rate of increase on the levies. That 10-year average is slightly misleading though, because if you look to just the last few years when we have been in massive reduction mode, our budget increases were very, very low or in fact, in 1112, you can see our spending decreased by 1.66%. The reason that our levies were beyond that again was because we were trying to balance the budget without, you know, coping, by coping with this reduced state aid amount. We're almost in the homestretch, so you've stayed with me this far. Thank you. I'm going to give you a quick overview. These are what I like to call the 30,000-foot level view of our total revenues and our total expenditures. As we go into the remaining weeks of budget season, each board meeting will be going through different areas and as we cover those areas, that's when we'll be looking at the specifics with the particular items. For our revenues, for purposes of the baseline budget, we have assumed that there is no increase in the school taxes. That's why the levy amount is the same. That will be part of the conversation as we go forward is to what extent do we wish to increase the levy and that will ultimately be put before the voters. The pilot payments reflects, as per the agreements that we have in place with the district and with the IDA and the various projects that have gone through that funding mechanism. You'll note an increase, part of that increase is finally seeing some of the Vista Technology Campus development. As you've seen those buildings go into that campus, we have in fact had an inflow of some additional pilot revenue. So, that is part of what is making up that increase in the 1314 year. And based on that build-out that is going to be occurring over multiple years, we should be seeing those numbers start to increase each year. So, there are glimmers of good news throughout this budget message, that was one of them if you're counting. State aid reflects the reduction that we talked about on the earlier slide. Our other miscellaneous revenues is many different sources, whether it's student charges, Medicaid reimbursements, charges to other school districts and things of that nature. That should be about flat in the coming year. Use of our fund balance, I have marked as to be determined because that also will be part of our conversation. So, when we look to the preliminary gap analysis in a few slides from now, the revenue number that we'll be using is this 85,687. On the expenditure side, you can see that our totals are going up about 2.76%, certainly below the rate of inflation. You'll note a decrease in the salary line item and this is a reflection of the fact that because our actual salary numbers are going to be coming in lower than budget this year, our actual numbers are going up slightly, but it appears to be a decrease because this view is looking at it on a budget-to-budget basis. The line that should jump out at you is, well, if your salaries are going down, how come your benefits aren't going down? Because in a perfect financial world, you would have a relatively parallel relationship between those two figures. And you can see it's a phenomenal increase in our fringe benefits, which I will cover in a separate slide. Again, that as you can guess is driven by our TRS and ERS increases. Our debt service numbers are down slightly and part of that is the result of the advanced refunding that we did in the prior year. A refinancing of your loan in layman's terms, it's got a fancy name in governmental accounting, but that generated some savings for us as well. Our total BOSI's services includes some additional services in the coming year. Again, that is going to be covered in presentations that Jody Monroe and Sal D'Angelo will be doing in the coming weeks. Equipment supplies and contractual, that covers all areas. Again, I think it'll be more meaningful to everybody if we look at that on a program-by-program basis going forward. The transfers and capital outlay, that increased by 100,000 dollars and that relates to what we had talked about through the facility forum process. There is a means where if you get approval from the community, you can spend up to 100,000 dollars per year on a single project in a single building and even though you're running it through your budget, you are able to get building aid on those numbers. So, we had talked about that as a direction that we wanted to move into that has been included in the baseline budget and that will be another one of our decision and review points as we go forward. We'll talk about that as part of the O and M presentation. So, those totals make up the 90.636 million for our initial budget totals. Fringe benefits. The largest component of our fringe benefits is in the health insurance benefit line, clearly a sizable portion. We're up to about 10.7 million dollars in the 1314 budget. These health insurance rates are tentative. Our rates are not finalized until March, so these are the worst-case scenario rates. If anything, they might trend down a little bit lower, but I will have to get you those updated figures once the final rates are released. The TRS numbers, again, even with relatively steady salary numbers, you're looking at about a 1.3 million dollar increase in that cost and that's purely driven by the rates. Similarly, for ERS, it's a sizable increase. Fortunately, the salary base for employees participating in ERS is a lower portion of the budget, so therefore that doesn't, we don't feel that hurt quite as badly as TRS where the more salaries are. FICAN, Medicare, workers' comp, and other miscellaneous line items are relatively stable. That total is up about 9% from the prior year. If we look a little bit closer at TRS and ERS, sometimes we kind of bandy about these acronyms and we talk like everybody understands exactly what these systems are, so I just wanted to take a quick moment to fill you in or remind you as to how this works. This is something that every local government employer in the state of New York is mandated to be a part of. So, if you are a governmental employer, you will be part of either ERS or TRS retirement systems. All full-time employees are required to be members of the system. You can have part-time employees, it's their choice whether they wish to be part of the system or not, but most employees do opt to partake in this, these retirement plans. These plans are what is known as a defined benefit plan as opposed to a defined contribution plan. The key difference is that with a defined contribution plan, a set amount of money is put aside for your retirement and when you retire, that's all the money that you have. So, when it runs out, it runs out. You don't have any guaranteed benefit over your lifetime with a defined contribution plan. These systems are what's known as defined benefit plans, which basically- These systems are what's known as defined benefit plans, which basically means that your pension benefit is guaranteed to you over your life, based on the formulas that are in place, depending on what tier that you are in. That's what drives a lot of this funding, because the way the rates are set, they look at what the actuarially calculated liability is, based on all the employees who are in the system, and based on their earnings, and then they compare that to the underlying asset values within these plans. Because these plans are required to be fully funded, if there is a shortfall, it has to be made up with the rates, and that's part of where you see these increases in the rates. If the stock market goes down, you have to cover that with the rates that you pay. If you look at the trending on our rates, you can see back in '08, '09, TRS was down at 6 point, or 7.63%. We're looking at probably 16.25% in this coming year. A similarly large increase in ERS from 8.4% up to about 20.9%. That's a huge increase over this five-year period. And again, it's something that we don't control. We don't negotiate this with our collective bargaining agreements. This is something that we must participate in, and we must pay. So... With our revenues at the $85.687, which does not have any increase in the tax levy, does not have any use of fund balance, with our expenditures at the $90.636 million, that is giving us a preliminary gap of about $4.9 million. We talked a little bit about that gap elimination adjustment, and I think this really helps to highlight what we're dealing with. If we had that $3.897 million that is part of our gap elimination adjustment coming back to us in the form of state aid, our gap, when we're looking at this preliminary budget, would be just over $1 million. That $1 million would be about a 1.78% increase in the tax levy, below the alleged 2% tax cap number. Clearly, a significant number for us. So, when we talk collectively with school districts, that the focus with legislators to give relief to school districts, the best way to help restore the aid that we are expecting to get, as per the formulas, would be to eliminate that gap elimination adjustment and not over 40 or more years, would be my wish as well.
One of the things here, and why we sort of double emphasize this slide, is advocacy, but also, one of the difficulties with budget is reliance on your own budget to support your budget. And the reason why this is important is, right now, you've seen our preliminary gap, before we use any tools, is around $4.9 million. Far away from that 7.7 a year ago, and I know Judy's about to cover that, but, no, I need to...
Go back.
Go back. With that 4.9, if you remove that 3.8, it really does. If we had our gap elimination back, the money that they gave us and did not take back to solve their problem, here's what the district's facing: no use of fund balance. We're healthy for another financial crisis that someone else can't manage, but we will try to. We would end up having potentially no reductions if the community would support a 1.78% levy. Meets the governor's goals, under 2%, as he says. I think it's reasonable, but unfortunately, when they take $3.8 million each year from us, which now is over four years, and 3.8 sounds like one thing, but when you understand that the district has lost gap elimination adjustment for four years, now in the tune of almost $16 million. That $16 million this district should have been able to spend or save to offset other items of need for the district. You could see the district would not be in these places, nor would the state. But when you look back on that other slide, where the state has continued to ramp up its budget over roughly a five, six-year period of about $3 billion extra a year, while they're taking back $2.1 billion from us, you can see that the numbers don't add up. That's where the communities need to finally rally and say enough is enough. So, that's what we could present. Unfortunately, until we get that GEA back, we're sort of still at the mercy of the budget process.
This is a blast-from-the-past slide. This is one of the slides that we had up there from our May 2, 2012 meeting. This was where we looked into our crystal ball and said, based on what we know now, based on the fact that our state aid did increase slightly in this current budget year, assuming that we even just stay flat going into the next year, and looking at all the results that we're getting from the cost containment efforts that we had put in place, we expected that our gap would be about $4.7 million. So, we, in fact, would have been well under that had it not been for the additional losses in our state aid. So, we have some options that we need to consider in the coming weeks. In order to help close that $4.9 million gap, one of the options that we will consider is how much of a tax levy increase should be put before the voters in May. If we were to go to the 3.64% maximum allowable tax levy limit, that would add $2.154 million, and that would bring the gap down to just under $2.8 million. If we decide to use the same level of fund balance of the $1,750,000, that would drop it down to about just over $1 million. From there, we continue the discussion, and we will have to look at, will there be certain program reductions? What are the best choices that are available to us? Will there be any results from the outreach from the community to the legislature to try to restore some of the state aid? Gap elimination, or, I'm sorry, the high tax aid, $655,000. I don't know that they'd restore that whole thing, but clearly, that would go a long way to reducing that as well. Are you coming with the cane to pull me away now?
Oh, I know, that's right, so...
Okay, you're up.
And that is important to understand, that we have not exposed the tools that we have. We have to sort of take a little wait-and-see attitude, because there is a lot of groundswell that has already started in the past week in regards to state aid, in regards to the governor pension smoothing concept, which, myself, to the board, I know I've talked a little bit to the board on it, I do not believe is wise, because all we're doing is trying to kick the can down the road. We should have already learned our lessons, especially as educators. On top of it, there is about $200 million that the governor is planning on using for what is known as TRS incentive or reduction, to try to help districts sort of offset some of that cost. We don't know if it's one year or continuing, so we have to be careful with that, because if we get some money back in that format, and it's only for one year, we've got to close that gap the following year. But as you can see, there are a lot of things that the Board of Education are trying to juggle. We value the community's input, as well as the administrative, the faculty and staff's input, and we also have negotiations as another part of this, as we did last year. We are constantly looking, as a board and as administrative staff, and I think as entire instructional staff, for any way that we can try to manage this to help bring stability and predictability to it. I hope you could see from one of the earlier slides, right here, is that our projection for our long-range plan was within $200,000. I want to commend Judy, as well as everybody, because if we had flat aid, our projection would have been over-projecting by about $500,000. As you can see, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to develop, in all avenues of this district, a solid, comprehensive, rigorous educational plan. We are also trying to develop a fiscal plan to remove our reliance on fund balance, to get the district in a more predictable situation, and hopefully would support on both ends, as well as making sure that our physical plant for the district is also being planned for and cared for into the future. This is a process that, as I've come in, I know we've talked about it as a board, we want to make sure that when you look at us, we are building the trust that you understand that we are trying to think of everything, be open and transparent. Tonight, these presentations are really to start the discussion. If we use what the legislature and the governor put in force, the maximum allowable tax levy limit, we still have to close a gap of 1.44. It's just whether or not we can use that, whether or not we get assistance back from our advocacy efforts, and whether or not certain program reductions can be palatable. I can tell you, on behalf of the board and the staff and the administration, we're very close to that point, and we offer a heck of a program. But there's a tension on a rubber band, and that rubber band is stretched as far as it can be, probably after this year. I think Rick Timms the other night said, "Most likely, the class of 2012 graduating class is receiving the best education that New York can provide for the near future." What about the class of 2013, 14, 15? Where do we go from here? We have, for us, an advocacy event, Monday night in Iskayuna, 7:00 PM. Please contact my office. I'd love to show up with about 10 to 15 parents that are motivated to go out and get their PTAs, their PTOs, any organizations. I also want the taxpayers in the area to understand this information, and I know when we sit down and talk about it, everyone does understand. It's hard just to get that motivation to get out. That's our job. This is our job. For every kid that's in participation in government tonight, stand up. It's a good night for me. This is our promise to them as well, and I'm not using these students, because one day, they're going to be in our shoes, and they're going to have an even worse fight if things keep going the same way. So, thank you, students. But most importantly, every one of these students has a dream, and this was a video that was shown at the end of the advocacy program of running out of time and options. Does it work automatically? Oh, there it is. Okay.
I want to be a sculpture builder, probably.
I want to be an attorney.
I'd like to go to Oxford University, or maybe RPI, or maybe become either an architect or mechanical engineer.
I'd like to play the saxophone. It sounds really cool. I like jazz music.
I'm a veterinarian.
A physician.
Julia. Because I believe that you can tell things that are amazing to people.
The foundation and future of our nation rests on the availability of a free public education system. It's a promise our forefathers made to their children. It's a promise that we now need to see through for ours, to ensure that every child has an opportunity to succeed and reach their potential, no matter who they are, no matter where they live. A quality education will provide our most disadvantaged students with a pathway out of poverty and into a productive life by providing them with the skills they need to meet the challenges of the 21st century global economy. Access to a sound, basic education is more than just a promise. It's the constitutional right of all children living in this state. But at a time when our students are expected to achieve at higher levels than ever before, a basic education is not nearly enough. Gone are the days when simply mastering the three Rs secured one's acceptance to a good college or opened doors to a promising career. Today, students need to be critical thinkers, well-versed in higher-level skills that will empower them to compete for the best schools and jobs across our state, our country, and our world. If we were America to lead in the 21st century, nothing is more important than giving everyone the best education possible, from the day they start preschool to the day they start their career.
I want to be an art illustrator, because I love doing art, but I also love to write and just write off the many agents when they just want me to do one.
And I want to learn as much as I can so that I can be the best kind of scientist I could be, a racer, an astronaut, and a car engineer.
I want to be theirs, just like my mom and my dad.
Artists, doctors, scientists, explorers, athletes, teachers, leaders. Contrary to some often-heard soundbites, New York schools are strong and have made gains in academic achievement. In fact, New York was recently ranked third in the nation by Education Week, based on our educational policies and performance in categories like K-12 Achievement and Standards, Assessments, and Accountability. According to a 2012 CNBC study, New York's education system ranks first in the nation for providing what businesses need. While there is still progress to be made, good things are happening all around us. But now, in public schools across the state, many fear the class of 2012 may have received the best education the districts will be able to offer for the foreseeable future. New York State's eroding commitment to education threatens to unravel those gains and jeopardizes the promise that our public schools can continue to provide the quality education New Yorkers have come to expect. 15% of capital region superintendents believe fiscal insolvency is a possibility in their districts within the next two years, but they're even more worried about maintaining the ability to give students a meaningful education program. Almost a quarter of capital region superintendents report that they'll be unable to fund mandated instructional and other student services within two years. The state, burdened with its own deficit, is facing its fiscal problems at the expense of public schools via the gap elimination adjustment, a take-back of school funding already guaranteed by law. In the past three years, more than $300 million of state aid has been withheld from capital district schools. It's eroding the quality of education for our children, leading many districts to dismantle successful programs, one piece at a time, and steadily shifting support for our public schools more squarely onto the shoulders of our taxpayers, despite the promised relief from the state's new tax levy cap. New York may lead the nation in overall education spending, but our funding system fails to differentiate between rich and poor districts, leading to vast inequities throughout the state. And though it holds the keys to unlocking doors to alleviate many of the biggest cost drivers in our schools, the state legislature has yet to act on a meaningful mandate relief for public schools. A lack of state leadership on these education issues will shortchange a whole generation of schoolchildren. Rural, urban, and suburban schools alike are bracing for yet another year of unpopular to untenable budget cuts, which will further diminish opportunities for the kids and communities we serve. Public education is a weighty obligation that each generation of New Yorkers has carried for the next. And in the midst of this economic crisis, the load feels especially heavy. But let's not lose sight of the fact that there is no more powerful tool than education for shaping the future of New York and filling the dreams of each and every child. Not every district is on the brink of disaster, but the reality is that there are districts right here in our region that are already out of time and options, and many other districts, suburban, rural, and urban alike, are falling close behind. Instead of equalizing, New York's approach to funding our public schools perpetuates a system of haves and have-nots. Is this really what our state leaders intended for New York? Is this really what New Yorkers want for our public schools? Is this really what we want for our children? We hope the answer is a resounding no. So, what can we do? Act now. Work together as students, parents, taxpayers, teachers, and state leaders, and fight to preserve the quality of education, not just in our own district, but for every student in New York. Get involved. Learn more about the issues by contacting your district or by visiting educationspeaks.org. Reach out to our elected officials to let them know how we want to be represented. Ask them to support legislation to end the devastating GEA, ensure adequate and equitable funding for all of our schools, and demand relief from costly mandates. Let's all stand together to fight for our schools, fight for our communities, fight for our kids, fight for their dreams.
I look forward to learning new languages. I want to learn Russian.
I want to learn some other languages.
I want to learn stuff that I've never heard.
What about mine?
And I think that sort of says a lot. What about their dreams? I was lucky. I was lucky. I grew up, and a lot of my dreams were able to be held, but it was because I was able to go from a very depressed area because of education. I know every one of you, no matter what part of our community you belong to, understand that through the trials and tribulations that we've all shared. It's time to stop being non-engaged with our legislators. It's time to address the issues that I hope that you can clearly see that are being pushed upon all of us, and that no one here, the Board of Education, myself, really wish to raise anybody's taxes. However, we have a moral and civic obligation to find the best balance, given the plight that we've been given by our elected leaders. I hope you will really consider coming out for the advocacy event, and I hope you will join us. Please contact us. Just so that you know, this sort of concludes the end of our presentation here, but I want to get back to the budget, if I can find it real quick. Thank you. The next one is some future meetings, and we'll open it up for questions from the board. But just please be aware, tonight's our initial first blush budget presentation. On the 27th, right after the break, we'll have operation and maintenance and athletics. On March 6th, we'll have K-12 instruction and technology. March 20th will be special education and transportation. And then, although we've got the 17th as a board meeting, the board and I are going to have to have a discussion because we may have to wait and schedule another board meeting. It depends on how well the budget discussions talk, because really, we want to do you the best service by making sure we have the most accurate numbers before we commit to anything. If you can, please come out those nights. We are also going to ask each of the department heads to also indicate some of the impacts of the past year's budget decisions as well. Remember, we have to look that once we make these decisions, sometimes we forget about them and just put them away. We need to look at them and see how they are impacting the district. Can we survive longer on it? Do we need to adjust? And that's part of this process, as well as the items that we put into place for this year's budget would be reviewed next year as well. So, we want to thank you for being patient, especially with all the numbers. I'll turn it over to the board for both Judy and myself.
Go ahead, Bill.
Since obviously not everybody's going to be able to attend the meeting on Monday night, can we put something up on the website afterwards? Some instructional tools or some tools that people can use, whether it's to write letters, you know, things that, you know, people can do.
That is one of the things we're working on, is an advocacy toolkit. It's in the process of now being proofed, as well as being generated for Monday night. So, anything that we have there, we'll make sure we get out to the individual board members, as well as hopefully, we'll be trying to utilize the constituents that are able to come to help get it out to other factions within the community, and I'm sure Bill will make sure that gets a story run as well.
Charmaine?
I have a question on the slide on trending on TRS/ERS rates. It's the one right before the decision. The slides aren't numbered, but it goes back. Do you have a sense of what's accounting for that huge increase?
Their formulas are based on what is the vested value of the benefits for the participants compared to the asset values. So, it'll be a combination of the two. Sometimes those asset values are based on a look-back date that's like a year in the past. I am going to a meeting where the TRS actuary is coming in. You thought this meeting was exciting. That should be even better, huh, on Friday? So, they may be able to provide some additional insights that I would be delighted to share.
Okay, yeah, I would like some additional detail on that. And also, I would just agree with Dr. Douglas's comment on the number of meetings. I thought we always, or in previous years that I've been on the board, we always had it, we had a little flexibility with that. We didn't have to, we didn't have a single meeting at which we had to adopt a budget. We usually had two in case we had these additional discussions. So, I would just echo that, your comment that we might need an additional one. I don't think we've ever had to have a firm date. We have to have a date where the budget had to be adopted, but we always had, I thought, a fallback meeting date.
I think tentatively, I would propose right now, because the 23rd is an important date, that we look at that in April as our potential adoption date, with the 17th being one of our final board development dates. But I just want to have everybody check their calendar as we go to the next meeting. We'll try to formalize.
Anyone else? Any, yep, I just got to open up some community members. I think the board's done asking questions.
Judy, I know last year with the tax levy, you had a question.
Yeah, just don't forget to state your name, too, for the...
Sorry. David Cooper. I know last year with the tax levy, you had to wait to hear from the controller's office because the formulas weren't set. Do we now know that it's 364, or are we going to have to wait again to hear from?
No. Last year was the very first year that this was put into place by the legislature, so there were many questions as to, well, how should you be calculating this, and where are you going to get that information from? The agencies that were giving us the various factors that we had to use had to develop the systems to capture that information. So, those delays last year were unique to the fact that it was a new piece of legislation, and those numbers now are final numbers, so.
Okay, and then the trend on the health insurance, you thought it might be lower? I mean, I know in the past, you have some sense, based on your three or four years of experience, how much that'll be adjusted, or?
I don't expect it to be a significant adjustment lower. It might be slightly lower. Again, we're effectively self-insured because of the size of our group. We pay 100% of all our claims, so any rate fluctuations that we tend to see are driven more so by changes in utilization.
Okay. And then the last question I had is for Dr. Douglas. I know in the past, we've seen at least the grade level for the next year out. Is that going to be, are we going to be able to, you only showed this year's. Are we going to be able to see?
One of the problems is with the grade levels. I can give you the tentative projection, but the problem is, it's not accurate right now because we are having, I mean, we are having several little ones come running through the high school right now to register, and up until May 1st, we won't even have a clue where kindergarten and first grade will bear it out. First, second, third, fourth, and fifth, you have already from our presentation, they just shift over one date. That's what you're going to see on the projection.
Okay.
But I can try to get that.
Yeah, because I know in the past, we've seen the long-range report, the full long-range report on the site.
Well, that will be posted tomorrow, like I said, so that will be...
It's going to be the whole report.
Yes. It's like 30 pages. Light reading. And David, thank you for asking that question on the tax cap. I know that was one of the things that was a bone of contention with us as administrators last year, is because we had to tell you where we thought it was, and then they changed. I mean, I've been driving Judy nuts because Judy, the controller's going to tell us on March 15th. Is that the right, no, Tom, it's the right number. We're done. I said, I don't want to hear on March 15th. The controller changed it. It makes it hopefully easier for us and less stressful.
The filing deadline for the district to submit their tax cap information to the state is March 1st, so it is final. I could do it now. I could do it early.
Yeah, they're at least getting a little bit more organized that they're giving us this information as well.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Megan, do you want to do Student Senate report? Just backtrack a little bit.
Hi, everyone. Student Senate's currently getting ready for our snowball dance this Saturday, so we're really excited. In preparation, we are pre-selling tickets to seniors at a discounted price in hopes that we'll get a large attendance of seniors this Saturday night. We're also hiding tickets around the school and posting clues on the announcements, so if you find it, you get a free ticket to snowball, which is really fun. After the snowball dance, we'll be starting to prepare ideas for spring fundraisers, and Dr. Douglas had actually come to us a few weeks ago with some really great ideas that we brought to mind. One was a senior citizen ball kind of dance thing, and we thought that was a really cool idea, and what we're trying to do this spring is get not only the school involved, but the community involved in our fundraisers as well. So, thank you, guys.
Okay, item seven, finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items A through D.
Move.
Any discussion?
Just really grateful for those donations. That's wonderful.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Professional personnel, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following instructional staff action items A through F. Any discussion?
Yes, I just have a question. Jody, just to remind us, the summer enrichment coordinator positions, those are the new program that was started last year, which does pay for itself, right?
Correct. Still have, I think, about $8,000 from last year that fiscal moves revenue.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and item nine, support...
No, we didn't vote.
You didn't vote.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Glenmont Support Personnel, right? It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items A through C.
Move.
Is that a first and a second?
There's a D. There's an amendment.
Oh, sorry, A through D.
I moved.
Was there a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just tonight, we do have Dana Burns, who will be the new internal claims auditor for reporting to the board. Dana, if you want to stand?
Welcome.
The audit committee had reviewed resumes and then conducted an interview and selected Dana, so congratulations.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Okay, of course, thank you. Correspondence for action. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following correspondent action item A through B.
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I know we already talked about policies. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. And then recognition of visitors on a non-agenda item.
I'm sorry. Glennmont had their first win at Carnival this, in January 12th, and we had a lot of, we had over 20 key club members help out from the high school as volunteers, and we had, I think it was like 10, at least 10 or 15 middle schoolers that were Glennmont alumni that came back and helped also.
Oh, nice.
I just wanted the board to know that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Karen? Oh, wait. All right. You have it. Go ahead.
Pete Freese, hi. Along the lines of the musicals and orchestra that you really get a thrill out of watching come together in real excellence. This Monday, I was able to go to the suburban council championships for indoor track, and Dr. Douglas did mention this, but the teams, both the boys' and girls' teams, performed excellently and came in third place in the suburban council, which is about two places higher than we have in the past. So, they really did a great job. One person, Grace Smith, high-jumped five feet, five inches, which is basically like over her head, setting a personal record, and is now about 12th in all-time in section two. So, there's some really great performances going on. I want to put a plug in that the girls' field events coach is one that the Booster Club funds, and the boys' sprint coach is one the Booster Club funds, and the boys' sprinters, and there's a lot of people here actually tonight from the track team, really are awesome. Just really get your adrenaline going just watching them, watching them perform. And lastly, I did want to put in a plug for the synthetic turf field. I think we're at a really critical kind of why in the road with that. We can continue on with the grass field that, as you see in back of our school, it's not being used right now. It's basically very limited use with grass because of the season. The turf option, if you go by Plumer Field, which is the exact same material, Plumer Field at the end of 787, the lights are on and kids are playing lacrosse last week. So, it's, we're talking about a field that could be used, I mean, that's what I see, our town using this. We have groups in town that are, will use this facility, and that's what, for very low money, I think we can make that happen. Lastly, the turf is a much lower maintenance and item, and just to give you an idea of where our maintenance is, we are probably the only field in the whole Northeast that still has their steeplechase barrier sitting out on the middle of the field, of the track. And that is because it hasn't been maintained, can't even get it out of the holes, can't move it up and down the way it's supposed to in competition. Thirty feet, 30 inches for girls, 36 for boys. Ours doesn't move. It's not maintained. That's the level of, we're trying to go to a low maintenance. I think the synthetic is the way to go. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Karen Kissinger, and I'd like to invite all of you to the B.C. March Madness basketball games on Friday, March 1st. It is a basketball game that staff plays other staff. It features middle school, elementary, and high school teachers, including Mr. Dave Kazanznak, I believe, will be there. His head snaps right up, playing basketball.
He's not competitive at all.
Nick Ferguson is also lined up, along with many others. We're working on Mr. Harley at the middle school. Remember him? We also have been working on some special guest referees, Bobby Trossit, and it looks to be a lot of fun. The six o'clock game is more of a fun game, and the 7:30 game is a little more competitive. Thank you.
If you're looking for a ref, I'd be more than happy to volunteer.
We would certainly love to have you as a...
I haven't run in a couple of years, but I don't get yelled at enough.
I'll mark that down. And I also should mention, it's a fundraiser for the Bethlehem Central Community Foundation, and we use the money to give back to the school through community innovation grants, alumni events, and other community events. Thanks.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Erin Kavna. I wasn't planning on saying anything, but just on the topic of the turf field, I just want to say from a student's perspective, I play field hockey, and I don't know if you've heard anyone from the field hockey program yet, but it is such a disadvantage to play on our field. Our field especially is terrible. I remember for, it was maybe last year, half the field was sunk in. We were playing in the JV field. We had some of our home games rescheduled to other games needing extra buses, and that was a huge inconvenience. Our senior night last year, our poor seniors didn't get to play on the football field under the lights like they wanted to because it was a complete wreck. I don't think soccer got to either. We had to play in our own field. It was a Saturday morning. It wasn't as fun as doing the under the lights, you know, Friday night game. We did luckily this year, but we ended up, at the end of the game, the field is so destroyed, we literally slid through the mud on our knees, which although was fun, I mean, it would be much better to play on turf than in a pile of mud. It almost got canceled, but I'm just saying from, you know, maybe another sports perspective that it would be a huge, huge benefit for the future of the program to have the turf field.
Thank you, Erin. On March 12th, as, I don't think they announced that at all tonight, but on March 12th, we are putting up two bonds. There's going to be two separate propositions. One is for like building maintenance and things like that, and the other, second one, would be for the turf. So, anyone 18 and over that lives in the town can vote, so.
And absentee ballots, the information is on the web, as well as, like we said earlier, the district mailing will go out and have information in that as well. I think the deadline, Bill, that we're going to have that to the board is like next week, next week, and then our scheduled mailing is somewhere on, right after the break.
We'll go to press right after the break. It'll be in the mailboxes to follow. Okay.
As far as the absentee ballots, are those going to be in the office, or?
They're online, actually. They can print them right out. The application and that will go into District Clicks.
Okay.
And then you mail to them. And then we nail them for our...
Okay, great.
Once they've shown that they're eligible to receive it.
Anyone else?
If I can make just one announcement that was given to me just a little bit ago. Currently, we have a delegation that's visiting, and they came in just the other day from China. They're here for roughly two weeks, and I know they're doing some stays with our own student hosts here, as well as they are working with the district to see the district's interest of joining in a long-term relationship with host schools and sort of sister school. And I think it's connected with Tianjin University in China as well. This is still in the infancy stage, and I know Mr. Landry is working on it. But just so that everybody knows, on Monday, Assemblywoman Pat Fahey, our state legislator representing Delmar, will introduce this delegation on the floor of the Assembly at 2:45 to 3:00 p.m. If anyone has time, I know, I just found out about it, but I will be attending as well. I'm sure the high school will. And we'll put it on the updates, but I just wanted to make that announcement, so if you have time, let us know.
You said Monday?
Monday, 2:45 to 3:00.
Okay, future meetings are up there, February 27th, March 6th, March 20th. Can we put the March 12th photo on there for the next one?
Yes.
Okay, and that's it. Is there a motion? Participation in government, don't forget to come up and sign out. Is there a motion to it, Jim? Just a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?